All right, we'll ask everybody to kinda get up. Let's get on both sides so that everybody gets on the camera here. All right, welcome everybody to our city council meeting. Every year about this time, exactly at this time as a matter of fact, for 35 years, we meet and get ready and prepare not only the people behind me, but all of our city council for National Night Out as well as a lot of neighborhood organizations. And I'm gonna turn it over to Lieutenant Davie who's gonna kinda give us an update on what's going on this year and then we'll read the proclamation.
All right, give the other neighborhood representatives here from any of the other neighborhoods. Come on up, come on up. Yeah, we need to get the neighborhoods involved here. They've been very supportive of this event and we appreciate that. This is actually, like the mayor said, this is something we do. It's always on the first Tuesday of August. So tomorrow night we'll be celebrating National Night Out. It is a national event, as the mayor said. This is the 34th or 35th a year. It's the 29th year that Des Moines has participated in this event. We have 49 organizations and neighborhoods tomorrow night that are having an event. And that, I think that comes out, we have 39 different locations. So there's a small window of time and we're gonna try to hit them all with the Des Moines Police Department. The Des Moines Fire Department's going to be out as well. We just really wanna get out and have a good time with the neighbors, get to know you. The more we know you, the more that builds trust in the community. And it's all about community police relations. So that's what it's about. It's to heighten the crime prevention awareness, to let the criminals know that we are working together to combat crime and deal with that in our cities to help reduce that crime. So if you can't come to a neighborhood, we certainly encourage you to turn on your porch lights in kind of a way of showing support for National Night Out as well. Like I said, we have events all over the city, so I would encourage you and those who are watching to find out that location that has been in a media release so that information is provided. Or you can contact me at 237-1531. Des Moines Police Department, we can plug in an event that's close to where you guys live. So we appreciate it, Mayor, and I'll let you...
Well, can I tell you, from what kind of... What's happening?
Well, each event kinda has their own timeframe. Usually some of them start around 4:30 or so and the last ones usually end about 8 to 9. It depends on the location. So there's about a, maybe a four-hour window there in the evening based on what neighborhood you plan on attending. So anytime within that window of time, certainly get out and, there's a lot of good food, we know that. That's something we look forward to. And so, and getting to know other neighbors in the area as well, so...
All right, Glenn and Connie, come on up if you will. You guys are part of this. All of our city council generally, we kinda divide up all these 50 different places that we're going and again try to meet and greet as many people as we possibly can and work with our fine public safety people who are out there every single day, 365 days a year and no matter what the circumstance. So quickly, I'm gonna read our proclamation. This is the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring the 35th Annual National Night Out Event on Tuesday, August 7, 2018. And whereas the Des Moines Police Department, neighborhood groups, businesses, and concerned citizens work together diligently throughout the year to prevent crime using sound community policing strategies. And whereas neighborhood awareness, spirit, cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out project and are key components in fighting crime and crime prevention. And whereas National Night Out provides an opportunity for Des Moines residents to join together with thousands of other communities across the United States on the same day in support of safer neighborhoods and to demonstrate the value of cooperative crime prevention efforts. And now therefore I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our citizens in the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 7, 2018 is National Night Out and call upon our residents of Des Moines to recognize and to participate in this special observance. Let's give our public safety people...
I should've had Des Moines Fire up there too, because they're just as much involved as the other ones.
Come on up.
Come on up, fire guys, let's go.
Can you see everybody? All right, perfect.
Thanks, everybody.
Jackie, what are you doing back there in the shadows?
Chris, how are you?
All right, looks like we've got a quorum. Welcome, everybody. Prior to our city council meeting this evening, we're gonna do a municipal housing agency governing board meeting. And let's call that meeting to order. It's 4:33 and I will ask clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. If we could have a motion for same. Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes. Item three is approving a submittal of the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's 2018 Section 8 Management Assessment Program Certification to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Board Communication Number 18-406. We'll go ahead and open it up, ask if anybody in the audience is here would like to make a comment on this submittal to HUD.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item three.
Item three's been moved. We'll kinda close the hearing on this. Any, while we're voting, any comments? Seeing none.
Seven, yes.
All right. Usually our housing agency board meetings are fairly short and this is the only item on the agenda for this evening, so if we could have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We said adjourned. Prior to our city council meeting tonight, we've already done the National Night Out, but I am going to ask our own council member, Gatto, if he's gonna have a message for us tonight. You wanna stand up?
Sure.
What do you think?
Okay, anybody participate with us, we would ask you to stand at this time.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've given our community. Just be with us, be with us as leaders as we make our decisions here. Just bless us and help us continue to make good, sound decisions for our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
So we're gonna get started real quickly here, but prior to starting, we've got a special presentation this evening. We have a list, a, not a real long list this evening, of a service award pinned recipients. This one we should've done in March, but employees with 25 or more years of employment are not listed here. This is a 20-year recipient and it's to be presented to our own city council member, Chris Coleman. Let's give him a great big hand for 20 years.
My speech is 20 minutes, one for each minute of my... It's been a life's blessing to have this chance, so thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations, Chris. And with that, let's call our meeting to order and I'll ask clerk to please take role for our city council.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented or as amended. I will say that quickly, 39A was added, it's approving and naming of a skateboard park improvements. 45B is corrected, it's roll call. 47 is corrected, it's proposal from Motorola Solutions for Public Radio Communications and authorizing the city manager to negotiate an agreement and not to exceed $14,260,000. And 52 is corrected and, which is gonna be continued to August 20th. So those of you who were thinking about waiting for item 52, we're gonna continue that unless someone wants to make a statement. Are there any other additions, corrections, or amendments? Council?
See none, I'll move.
All right. Item two's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving our consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 38. These are routine items that we generally do as one vote and without separate discussion unless either a council member, someone sitting up here, or somebody from the audience wishes an item to be pulled for additional clarification or discussion. This evening, items 4G, 4H, 4M, and 4N, council member Coleman votes no. Item five, I am voting no. Item nine, council member Gray wishes to speak. Item 28, council member Mandelbaum is gonna abstain. Item 30, council members Coleman and Westergaard wish to speak. And item 32, council member Coleman wishes to speak. Again, are there any other items, three through 38, that anyone would like to have pulled for additional discussion?
I see none, I'll move item three.
Okay, item three has been moved. Voting is in progress.
Seven, yes.
All right. Takes us to item nine. Item nine is public improvements. Nine is approving a change order number three with OMG Midwest Inc. Doing Business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving for additional work on the 2018 HMA Residential Paving Program, not to exceed $235,000. Council Communication Number 18-404. Council member Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a good change order to have. This is designated for part of the hard-hit flood areas that we suffered in the northwest side of the city. This is to redo Cummings Parkway, which really took a beating. I've gotten a few emails. It looked like the remnants of World War II after the flooding tore all of the pavement and asphalt up. So we've completed the work as of last Friday for all of the patchwork that needs to be done, but we are gonna get that street reconstructed and have it back in service by December of this year. So with that in mind, I'm gonna move item nine and hopefully we'll have that thing ready to go for our residents by December.
Seven, yes.
All right, that takes us to item 30. This is a donation agreement with NAP Properties, L.C. Williams C. NAP Charitable Foundation Regarding Playground at Evelyn K. Davis Park, $75,000. Council members Coleman and Westergaard, I believe, wish to speak. Who would like to go first? Go ahead, Linda.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our Parks Department for having such a good working relationship with our private partners. And it really does take the generous donations of our business community that are always willing to step up and make our city better. So I just wanted to thank the Parks Department for working diligently and for our private partners in the William NAP Foundation for donating this playground. It's badly needed and it's just wonderful to have such good partners in our city. We're very lucky to have such generous donors.
Coleman?
I wanna make the same comments. Is there anybody here from the NAP companies or the NAP Foundation? There's, you know, few people that rival the generosity of Mr. NAP and what he's showered upon us. And I think he realizes that, you know, something that we all do, that, you know, our parks are a unique public service and part of the social fabric and the social safety net of neighborhoods. And for him to make this a priority in his charitable giving just shows the, you know, the attention that he has to neighborhoods and families that really need a helping hand. This is a, this is a park that's not surrounded by the wealthiest people in town. And so to make it what we want is, requires some extraordinary generosity. And I, it has to be 20 years now or longer since Mr. NAP made the first gift to make Evelyn Davis Park an incredible place. The money that he's provided for programming and safety and now this gift is just really overwhelming. And there's a handful of people in town that have stepped up the way that he has, but he was one of the first. And I think without his leadership over the last generation, we wouldn't have been able to raise the private money for these parks. The council's heard me, you know, worry that private money in our parks might result in the parks in the wealthiest neighborhoods being the nicest ones. And this is, this is proof that our city Parks Department, led by Ben Page, is really making sure that every park is taken care of. And I couldn't be more thrilled about this. And that Evelyn Davis Park has been an amazing thing for their neighborhood and now to know that it will be for another generation is really, it brings me a lot of satisfaction. And I know it does to the council, so I'll move 30. I just wanted to pull that off and make that recognition of Mr. NAP, the people at his company and the NAP Foundation.
And springboarding off that, National Night Out will be at Evelyn K. Davis Park tomorrow, so we'll be there.
Seven, yes.
All right, item 32 is directing city manager to negotiate an agreement with Des Moines Area Regional Transit Authority, DART, to sell city-owned property at and adjacent to 2501 Murray Street and purchase DART property for a city stormwater detention basin. Council Communication Number 18-412. Mr. Coleman?
I intend to support this and I think it's good for both parties. I will tell you that over the time I've been on the council, which the mayor told you how long earlier, we have successfully worked with the 28E organizations, so almost all of them pay a pilot fee to us or they're in privately owned property that pays us taxes. And, you know, DART is the one that I think still remains outside of that. And this might give us a chance, as we help them and we solve this, to put that back on the table and to have those conversations. I think it's wholly reasonable when we take taxable property off the tax rules in town that the city, along with the whole region, help make up for the lost revenue. As we prove on every agenda item, the city could use that revenue and spends it in ways that are really important to our city. So I'd like the manager to include that as you move forward in final documentation and discussions.
Seven, yes.
and Skate Park, A is approving of naming of skate park improvements. Uh, Angela.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. Um, as you know, several months ago, we came before you, uh, when we were launching the Des Moines Regional Skate Park. And since that time, we had a naming partner and that's why it's called now Luritz and Skate Park. But tonight, I'm asking, um, to approve two other naming opportunities inside the park, the Greater Des Moines Community Snake Run, I believe, and the Prairie Meadows, um...
Bowl.
Some kind of bowl, just a minute. I'm learning all these, I'm learning all these names for, uh, skate, Clover Bowl, it is. And, um, with each naming opportunity...
What is it? You don't know?
It's a difficult... I do know!
It's a Clover Bowl!
It's a bowl inside the, um, skate park. It'll be permanently inside the skate park. There are different, um, opportunities to skate depending on your level of skateboarding. Uh, that's the great thing about this skate park. It's all levels, from babies to you yourself can learn how to skateboard inside this park. Now, not only will these two naming opportunities come before you, but down the road, there are other opportunities. Someone with $250,000 will be coming very soon and several $100,000 donors have already stepped up that I, I guess I have to come back to let you know what those naming right opportunities are. Um, they'll be along the shade areas of the skate park and then eventually we will have a donor wall, similar that you've had at Gray's Lake or wherever where smaller donors have participated. But we are very close on reaching, that's what I'd say too, uh, the $3.5 million goal that we've had to construct. We're about 400 thou, less than, uh, $300,000 to reach goal, so...
To reach goal, all right.
We're almost there.
Congratulations, uh, to that and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And so, this is Community Foundation...
The Greater Des Moines Community Foundation and Prairie Meadows Clover Bowl.
All right. Well, um, keep up the great work and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a question for the manager. Uh, so she says that she has other, other naming, will that be on the consent or is, uh, Mrs. Connelly need to come down and explain who every naming, uh, person on there? I don't know why not. Yeah, I could place that on the consent if it's... Okay.
I would think that would be the proper way to do it. I appreciate that, thank you.
And do we need to take action tonight to allow those to be named? Okay.
This is the first one.
The ones going.
There's a roll call for 39, receive and file our comments and then move 39A.
Yeah.
With, with the, uh, points filled in based on her comments?
Yes, I'm not going to try and repeat it, but I'm happy to move 39A. Uh, and I want to thank you and the entire committee for the work you're doing to make this skate park a reality. It's going to be a fantastic addition to our community. Uh, and it's like what council member Westergaard was talking about earlier, the public-private partnerships, uh, and the folks willing to step up to reinvest in our community is one of the great things about, about being here and, uh, one of the great parts about this job is you get a, uh, you get to approve those type of partnerships and hopefully encourage more of them. Uh, so with that, I'll move 39A. I'll move to receive and file the comments and move 39A to be filled in. I'm not going to try and repeat the names, but to be filled in, uh, as Supervisor Connolly said.
Prairie Meadows Clover, Clover Bowl.
And, and we'll move on.
All right.
Thank you.
Seven yes.
All right, item 440 is DeAndre Butler of 805 25th Street to speak regarding, uh, Stop the Hate Community Awareness Event to take place, uh, in the Woodland Heights neighborhood and get approval for a one-day event.
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, I just want to, uh, say, uh, start off and say thanks to everybody who came today to support me on this. Uh, and before I get to going, uh, originally when I came down to the clerk's office to ask to speak, I looked up kind of the rules. They say I only have five minutes to speak. Speak with someone if you need longer. I brought that up. I don't think I want to go over five minutes. I just don't want to be cut off in the middle of what I was saying, but I did bring up to someone that I wanted to speak longer than five minutes. I just want to put that out there. Um, and, and to say another thing, uh, it's just, I'm, I'm not going to call it the urban community, I'm not going to call it the lower-class community, I'm just going to say, we all learn different. We all don't process things the same. Uh, and I just want to say that, just want to just put that out there. Uh, but my name is DeAndre Butler. Uh, I live at, uh, 805 25th Street in Des Moines, Iowa. Uh, I'm a local, uh, I'm also known as That Do Bigs, a local hip-hop artist. I put on an event called Big's Big World that I've held at 811 24th Street in the Woodland Heights neighborhood for the past two years. It was brought to my attention that I couldn't hold it in my desired location because they say it's a concert and it should be in a commercial area. Well, I'm, I'm here to challenge that notion because what I'm proposing is more than just a simple concert. Big's Big World just doesn't highlight local talent, but our main objective is to raise awareness for the issues that are going on today. Last year was breast cancer awareness after we found out that my mom was diagnosed. This year, it stopped the hate ironically, um, and we're talking racism, politics, violence, bullying, pride, and just to jump straight to 2020, I want Big's Big World to be that year's let's vote. But these are the same issues that's pleading society and hindering neighborhoods from becoming diverse and inclusive as my Woodland Heights neighborhood. Big's Big World is a platform that promotes diversity, equity, social economy, social economics, health issues, climate and culture in our neighborhood. It might not exist at the Capitol or the White House, but it exists, it exists in my neighborhood. And, and what this does for the local talent, it, it, I don't have the words for it, because just being a local hip-hop artist is hard already in the city we are in. I mean, just from being shunned out, overlooked, mistreated when we do get on shows, Big's Big World not only treats artists with 100% real respect, but they also make them feel like a superstar that they are for that day. And it puts on, and we all get put on one stage to raise awareness in our community the best way we know how. Hip-hop doesn't already have the best rap, but this platform it does because we all come together for the same cause. I can't think of any urban event raising awareness in Iowa, but I would say the nation that's doing it like this, if you ask me. A lot of artists that's on my stage are the same artists that probably would never get a chance to perform on these big sponsored festivals, but Big's Big World became a home to them. They keep asking me, why down I have it somewhere else? Why do I have to have it in my neighborhood? I want to highlight my neighborhood. I have pride in my neighborhood. My neighborhood has pride in me. Once we found out that I couldn't have it in my neighborhood, my mom and I got together, petitioned the neighborhood, gathered over 150 signatures with proof of 132. And we only law, and we, we, we had to dispose of a sheet because one day we was petitioning and it was raining so much, it just got destroyed. I honestly want to say, I don't think people know how hard it is to get 130, 130 signatures in a small neighborhood. We all met, we, we met with our neighborhood association and got them to approve as Parks and Recreation told us to. Plus, I lived in this neighborhood for over 17 years. My neighborhood is my home, but it's not just about me. There's so many reasons why I don't want to leave my neighborhood. We're directly next to the Woodland Cemetery where the founders of Des Moines, where the founders of Des Moines reside, the founders of Des Moines reside. Um, excuse me, uh, we're adjacent to the historical center street. These things may not mean a lot to people in this room, but they mean a lot to me. But, and, and right there is just more educational significance. I don't, I don't know if you guys have kids or not, but if you do, and if you ever see them fighting for something that's right, I hope you back them up, especially when they have people that are against them just because they're stuck in their ways. I, I know I have one or two, maybe even three people complaint, making personal complaints about me having my event, about me having my event, but those are the same people who didn't want you guys in your position today. And the majority spoke, that's why you're in your position today. Um, excuse me, um, if, uh, if this was just a simple block party or concert, I wouldn't even have made the effort to do everything I've been doing. Um, I would have just booked the venue and made it happen, but this deserves to be in the community. Um, and to be honest, I don't know what's the definition of freedom anymore, because we petitioned our neighborhood, got the neighborhood association to agree. I had it the past two years with no police, no, uh, incidents, 90% of...
Keep going.
With 90% of a neighborhood in a five-block radius to agree, it's like, uh, we all wanted this, we all want it to happen, but the city don't. They say if they let me do it, then they have to let everybody else do it. I say if they can follow the same criteria, then let them. If it's something that betters the neighborhood and the community that supports it, then that should be a different conversation. And they bring up me selling tickets. I sell tickets because we don't have any sponsors. Uh, we don't have any sponsors, uh, and just moving forward, if we ever do have a gross net, I would like to donate a portion of that to my neighborhood association. And I think that should have some type of criteria. Um, so I guess today I'm just proposing that we create a title and criteria that more clearly defines our attentions on what we are doing, because there is no definition or ordinance that defines what I'm doing. Um, calling it a block party is too small. Calling it a concert is too narrow-headed. Calling it a festival is too big. I call it Big's Big World and I define it as a neighborhood awareness event. Um, and I don't know if there's some committee that we could work with to authorize an ordinance to include among, uh, current ordinances that, that defines protocol for block party concerts, but I'm just here figuring out how we can make this work. And I just want to say, I could, I've spoke with a couple, a couple people to come down and speak just on my behalf, but I literally just canceled everyone just because, I mean, I, I feel like I've, I, I do so much for my community without being said. It's just, I, I, I don't need anybody to speak on my behalf. I just, I've done it the past two years. Uh, then I, I get a letter to my house that says I've been running illegal, um, and things like that to where I brought a flyer, I, I come to the city and bring flyers every year. I don't know what was different about this year that, that just was just, he can't have it. Uh, this is the same flyer, I was bringing the same flyer down this year. We brought the same flyer two years ago. Um, but, I mean, I, I'm just want to know what can I do to make this happen?
All right. Um, we probably end up wanting to put it to, uh, the city manager and the property departments, but Josh, you want to make a couple of comments?
Well, I mean, I certainly appreciate the passion and everything that you were doing for the community and we certainly want to keep you engaged and keep, uh, your energy and your event going. Uh, I think the question is, there, there are a couple of questions. One is, uh, you know, treating this event like other events, uh, and figuring out, you know, figuring out how this fits in the ordinance. And I think you identified that and I think that should be part of what we do. Uh, we can certainly, in my understanding, is there've been discussions about neighborhood concerts and how to craft something that is sufficiently narrow, because I think that's been a challenge and why we don't have an exception in the ordinance today for events like what, what you're doing. But I do also think that there is room and space for events like this to continue, even if we don't solve the question in the ordinance. Uh, and I know that there are options in the Parks Department for locations where this event could take place and my hope is that that, that is what happens. Uh, I know staff have reached out to you about finding a, a suitable location and I'd like to see that, uh, see that move forward, but I'd, I'd like to hear from the manager in terms of if you have further suggestions, but I'll, I'll make a motion along those lines.
You do, do you do it at your house?
Um, well, it's the residence of 811 24th Street, uh, Bill Jacobs. It was an old warehouse of, that's residence now, um, but we just used the backyard. Well, actually, we cut off the street from Rollins, the center, that small section, we block it off, food, the whole section's free right there, food, the booths, everything. But if you want to see the live performances, you can go into the backyard and just that section, but yeah, we don't use, it's not in no one's house. We just use the driveway to the backyard that leads to the block that's cut off.
Sell alcohol?
No, no.
Manager?
So, uh, you, I think you explained actually well how difficult it will be to narrowly define the type of, uh, performance, um, event that you have, uh, to, uh, duplicate that and, and make sure that we are, um, taking into account the neighbors in, in potentially other areas that this might grow into or, or similar, similar events might want to be held. Um, so it, I, I just want, wanted you to make sure you understood that, uh, that would have to be incredibly narrowly drafted ordinance change. Um, so there, there's a, there is an incredible amount of challenge there. Uh, the other part of it is the, uh, charge, uh, that's involved. What, what has been the history of that charge?
Um, it's $20.15 in advance.
Right. Um, have, have you had a chance to look at, at other venues that...
Um, yeah, I mean, from even getting the city standpoint of just different parks and things like that, I'm, to, to sum it up, I'm just a visionary, you know? I, I, I go see what I can create and how I can make it look and just all the options that's been coming away. It's either too expensive or there's not enough room, there's a slide right there, there's a swing set. It's just, it's just nothing just kind of fits what I'm doing. And I would actually want to be out at the, uh, Water Works or something one day, but I'm not that big. I'm bringing in about 150 people in and out. Um, I mean, I'm, I just, I'm not that big yet.
And what is the dates that, that you intended to...
Um, in a, in my perfect world, I would always will be able to do it the last weekend of July. So, me not knowing I was going to be stopped this year, I, it was supposed to be set for July 28th. Um, now, I've been throwing dates around in September to make it happen again, but I'm just saying what I have to do to make it happen. And I understand, uh, when it comes down to just narrowing it down and, and I just, you just, I just wish somebody understands my frustration of, get it 90% of neighbors in a five-block radius to say it's okay to get the neighborhood association to approve. Uh, I mean, it should be some type of, you, and not to do it the past two years. And I'm, I wouldn't even be here if I had a problem. I'm here because it's such a great feeling, such a great vibe, no fights, no problems, no nothing like it was breast cancer awareness last year. This year stopped the hate, 2020's let's vote, you know what? I mean, it's just such great to where, I mean, I just understand my frustration to where it's like, oh, why can't I have it this year? And it just doesn't make sense. And I don't want to, it does, it says, I just know it all stems from a, a personal person talking to somebody in the city to stop me, because nobody, everybody is telling me, no, don't even know what's going on. Now, don't, it all started from saying I'm just too loud. I'm sure I'm not going over 65 dB. They want me in an area that takes 80 to 100 dB. These are stacked speakers. I got two speakers with an amp, like, I don't know why I'm making out to be something different that I'm not.
So, Mr. Manager, hopefully you can, uh, work through this and let's work through community development and whatever other departments are necessary and let's see if we can't, uh, help them. I, I've been aware of some of your past, uh, things and I haven't heard anything negative either, so...
Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm, and it's that, and it's, it's, it's that great. I'm trying, and that's why I'm just so amped up, like, I, I, you're stopping something that's really great for the community and I don't want to, for confidentiality, after last year breast cancer awareness, we had over 80 women sign up to get screened, over 20 men get screened, and one of the young ladies found out she had stage four breast cancer and is still fighting it today. But every time I bring that up, I don't think nobody cares much as about her life as much as I do. Like, I'm out here saving lives. There's events that go on here that hospital rates go up, you know what I'm saying? I'm out here saving lives and I'm getting stopped for doing it and it's...
All right. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. So, I think Josh has a, has a motion and, um, uh, clerk, uh, will move it forward.
I'm out here saving lives and I'm getting stopped for doing it, and it's...
All right. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. All right. I think Josh has a, has a motion, and Clerk will move it forward, but most importantly, Scott, if you'll have the proper folks get together with DeAndre to see what we can do to help move this thing forward.
And all I ask is, will somebody contact me, or should I contact someone?
I will contact you.
Thank you so much.
My birthday's the fifteenth of September, so if you want to have a... Date might work out good for you.
Hey, I'm a, I'm a visionary, don't, don't... Oh, and I just want to mention that, this will be the first year that we take in our Big's Big World. We lived in Des Moines for twenty-some years, I moved here when I was eight. I'm from the Quad Cities, and we're bringing it this first year to the Quad Cities, and went through their whole city council, and we're direct, and the Iowa-Naillinors are two different situations, but we're directly in the middle of the neighborhood, and that just got there, it's like, yeah, we needed in our neighborhood, and just things like that. I mean, I just want to put out there, it's the first year we bringing it back home, and I just don't want to stop it a good thing here. I mean, I don't know, I'm talking in circles, but thank you so much.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Did we get the votes?
Seven yes.
Seven yes, all right. Those of you who've been waiting for some other ones, we need to skip immediately to our hearings, it's 5:07.
Mayor, can, there, there appears to be somebody with their hand up that may want to speak on that.
Somebody want to speak? Come on up, real quick.
I know DeAndre asked that nobody speak on his behalf, but I wanted to take one to two minutes of your time. My name is Travis. I live in the community where DeAndre holds his events. I've attended both of the past two events and have observed the way that they have, without any experience on putting on events, turned it into something that is more of a community where it's the event, where they have booths, people representing things, and, and actually making a difference, and it creates a really positive vibe. And the reason I actually hung my hand up, not, was not to just come up here and reiterate what he shared with you, but to just express a certain level of support and ask if there's any way myself or anyone in this room would be able to join and be involved in supporting, drafting whatever terminology might be required to make it happen, because as, as Scott, you stated, it may be complicated, I, I believe that it's very, very possible, and I'd be happy to assist.
All right.
That's all.
In your name?
Travis. I live on Thirty Second in Des Moines.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. It's now 5:08. So, 5:08, we're going to open our hearings. The first item is item fifteen, on the vacation of a portion of an alley right of way located south of and adjoining 1437 East Fourteenth Street in conveyance to Spot Free Car Wash LLC for a thousand dollars. A under that is first consideration of the ordinance above. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Thank all of you for coming down tonight, by the way. Appreciate it.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move fifty, fifty-eight, and I'll go ahead and move the second and third readings.
Can we have some discussion?
Sure.
About fifty?
Sure.
When, when this was, when we set the date of hearing, I said, and if you look in your packet, I did put this question out to the, to the city, I put the question out, and it's in your packet. When we set this date of hearing, it was my understanding that the city was going to reach out, the real estate department would work with Mr. Moyer and the Car Wash to talk about how this alley was going to be split, and the Car Wash gentleman said he would be happy to put an easement in place. Say what? But I don't think any of that happened. I talked to Mr. Moyer, and he said no one had ever contacted him. I didn't get a hold of Spot Free today, but, I mean, they want to work with Mr. Moyer, but I don't want to just pass this without, I mean, what happened, what happened to the real estate talking to, talking to Spot Free, or, or talking to Mr. Moyer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Chris Pose, 317 Sixth Avenue, here representing Spot Free Car Wash. Linda, I'm not aware of the discussions that had to happen between Mr. Moyer and Spot Free. Our position all along has been that it's Mr. Moyer's parking cars, or cars that are being parked in this alley as being the problem. We have no problem with granting the ingress egress easement, we don't see, we think that solves the problems Mr. Moyer was raising, that if Dollar General were to buy their land in the future, could they get back there? Absolutely they can, but what we're trying to do is just prohibit the parking. And that, that has been the discussion all along. Mr. Moyer, there were two meetings of the Plan and Zoning Commission on this issue. They could have come to both those meetings, they did not. I'm not aware of any discussions that have happened with the Moyer family, I'm not sure they have any interest in actually purchasing, purchasing any of the land. I think they wanted to stop the alley vacation, which has already occurred, and we're simply now just following through with the conveyance. The very photo, I think you're aware of it too, but the photo that comes with the, the notice shows the, the problem, they had the objections consent card. You can see there are three cars parked at the time this photo was taken, right in the alley, and the proximity of the car wash is that once you're in the car wash, you can't turn out of the car wash with those cars parked in that, in that location, so...
And I'm supportive of it a hundred percent, but when we set the date of hearing, I said, is somebody going to reach out to Mr. Moyer? And I was told that real estate would do that, because sometimes they split the alley between the two property owners, and then there's a common easement so both parties can use it, and I don't think that ever happened, and I'm, I just want to know why didn't it happen? And I think that we owe Mr. Moyer at least a conversation. I'm, I'm fully supportive of this. I understand that, that Allen needs this, that the Car Wash needs this, and we can't have the car, the trucks across the street come over, and they wanted to use it because it's an alley, and, and everybody said, well, it's an alley, and so you don't own it either. So, I'm, I'm, I'm fully supportive of doing it. I just wanted there to be another, a conversation, so, you know...
I'll withdraw my motion, and we can continue it, and you can get some answers.
Okay.
I've got to ask, because the response to you on your question says, you know, there's reservation of a public ingress egress easement, which I think accommodates exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And that's, that's taken place, and to accommodate Moyer's use of, of their site, and they're going to continue, I would assume, to do whatever it is that they do on their side, and I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what else that, that anybody can do. They obviously had public notice of, of the hearings.
I, I can't speak, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's right, that there is a reservation of the public easement. I know your question, Linda, I can understand it. I wasn't there when the, what real estate was told and whether real estate actually may contact with Mr. Moyer. I would suggest that maybe what the council do is approve the first reading tonight, we not waive the second, third readings, and then we can maybe do that before it happens.
That would be, that would be my motion, is that we approve the first reading, but I really would like to understand why real estate, because if you go back and look, I know that I said, who's going to have that conversation? And I was told real estate would talk to both parties, and I talked to Mr. Moyer today, and he knows nothing about this.
Yeah, he's got, he filed an objection card, and I guess real estate can reach out to him and ask him what his, what his reasoning proposal would be, that we could approve the first reading, that's fine.
Yeah, and I, as long as there's an easement in place, both parties can use it, even if he sells the property, the new owner can use it, you just can't park there.
You can't park in it, exactly right.
You can't park in it.
That's right. Thank you.
All right, so your motion is to move it, but only the first reading?
Move it, but only the first reading.
Mr. Coleman?
Maybe too much detail, and I can get it next time, but when we say it's a public easement, is that a city easement that we'd have to grant the Moyers access to, or does it just, is it like an alleyway, or a...
It stays with the property.
I know, but I'm saying, do we have to have a separate agreement to give Mr. Moyer access to it, or it, public is public?
It's publicly recorded.
Okay, I, I, a question has just come up, and so I've got to ask, Joe, you had a motion, I was thinking you withdrew it. Our attorney seems to think that you withdrew it and put a different one on the table.
No, no.
No, I didn't.
You're right, and I'll, and I'll withdraw that motion also. You're right.
Okay, so...
I'll just sit here and be quiet.
All right, we're good, we're good now? All right, so now we have, we have a motion, as Linda stated it.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion for item fifty and fifty A, but not to waive the second and third reading, reading until there's some conversation, or until somebody goes to Mr. Moyer and says, here it is, Spot Free Car Wash is going to own it, but there is an easement that, that anybody can use it.
Okay, so we want evidence of that that has been conveyed to Moyer?
Pardon me?
You want evidence of that, understanding that to be conveyed to Moyer?
Yes, because I, I read the easement, and it talks about if they need access to the back, and then there's another road that goes along the east side, but it doesn't say anything about the property owner right next door.
Mr. Mayor, I think I understand what they're talking about there, is right now the alley that runs east-west that's to the back there is blocked off, I think, by a fence.
Chairs, actually.
Okay, in any event, the, the idea is, once that alley is open, this would be an entire public easement that goes all the way back and includes the properties that are to the north going east and west. Moyer's access point for a, a future development would come right off the alley that's already existence, and that easement will be in place. So, the easement, the public easement on the north side, I believe, is if and when that north, north side alley ever comes open again, and so that's why I think the language is the way that it is.
I just think there needs to be something in there, just to be fair to Mr. Moyer.
All right, voting in progress.
Seven yes.
All right, so, Mr. Manager, hopefully before and enter a packet for the next one, you can get staff to get us some evidence that that communication is taking place. All right, item fifty-one, on the vacation of a portion of Woodland Avenue right of way located north of and adjoining 616 Tenth Street in the conveyance of a permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property to Principal Life Insurance Company, formerly known as Principal Mutual Life Insurance Company, for six hundred and thirty dollars. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Open the hearing and ask if there's anybody here to speak to this, I think we see somebody.
Mr. Mayor, Council Larry James, 801 Grand Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The, the only thing I'm asking for tonight is a waiver of the second and third reading. This is a minor title issue, that's, this is the last item that has to be addressed in the transaction.
All right. Anybody else to speak?
I don't see anyone else, I'm happy to move fifty-one and fifty-one A, and move to waive the second and third readings.
All right, and we will close the hearing, and voting's in progress.
Seven yes.
Item fifty-two, on a request from Kenneth L. Lawyer Lawler, doing business at Great Plains Garden Center to rezone forty-four fifty-five and forty-four sixty-five Hubble Avenue from A-1 Agricultural to limited C-2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow the use of the property for a commercial daycare center and a residential dwelling, subject to conditions, and to continue to August twentieth of two thousand and eighteen. We'll open the hearing, the, the motion actually, or the request is to, to continue to August twentieth, but is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, let's close the hearing. And...
We're not passing the motion tonight? What does it say?
Continue, continue.
Why are we continuing it?
They have not turned in the signed acceptance of rezoning conditions.
Okay, then I would move to continue.
Seven yes.
All right, item fifty-three, is authorization to acquire the necessary property interest for the James W. County Sports Complex signage improvements, Council Communication Number Eighteen dash four oh five. We'll open the hearing on item fifty-three, is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item? Item fifty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I see none. Mr. County's been very, very generous for our sports complex. This is something that I believe will be an improvement with the signage. Unfortunately, one of the property owners isn't, isn't, isn't liking the idea, so we've got to move forward, doing it this way, other than trying to be able to be a good neighbor and work with them. So I will move fifty-three.
All right. Item fifty-three has been moved, we'll close the hearing.
Seven yes.
All right, let's note that it's five twenty-one, and we are completing the hearings. Takes us back now to item forty-one. This is from Leanne Oxier of thirty-one twenty fifty-seventh Street to speak regarding flood prevention progress. Leanne?
She's not here, but she sent an email. Yeah, I just, yeah, I did, I got an email. Hold on, let me pull it up.
Okay, but she's not here to speak, so let's...
She just wanted to get an update on the committees that we were setting up and updating the flood information, that I can get to you and get an update that we can get sent out to, Leanne, then?
Yes, I couldn't do that.
All right.
I will look for it here.
So let's, yeah, maybe motion to receive and file a request and refer to City Manager for proper response. Does that sound good?
Yes, I will move that.
Part of what we are going to do is move forward on, on, on that, is, I mean, we've talked about that, but the other part was addressing the stormwater needs and moving quickly on the rates. We talked about doing that in August. I think there's only one more meeting, will that be on our agenda?
That is the intent.
Okay.
If you want the two questions, I can...
All right, we have a motion.
Board them on.
Seven yes.
All right, item forty-two, from Jenny Kleis, twenty-five oh five Forty-Seventh Street to speak regarding sump pump at forty-seventh, Seventh and Holcomb.
Hello all, nice to see you again. I would like confirmation of the policy regarding the sump pump that the city provides at forty-seventh and Holcomb. You know, there was some discussion that in the event of a heavy rain forecast or flash flooding, that it would be set up within an hour of a phone call being made. I want to know who from the city makes that decision as to if we see it's going to rain heavy tomorrow, who actually makes that decision? Or if one of us citizens make a phone call, who on the other end says, yes, we're going to set it up? No, we're not going to set it up?
We're, we're, I'm, I'm not disputing what you heard, but who, who, I've not heard the hour...
Mr. Coleman, I think we're going to bring up Jonathan Gano, who's going to address this, but if she has a list of things, let's get them all out, and we'll have Jonathan come up.
And how are those of us on forty-seventh Street notified? So that you're not getting twenty phone calls from the same people who are right next door to each other? Is there any way that, you know, we can be notified, email list, lists or something that somebody has called, they're on their way? You know, there, there were a lot of us on fifty-seventh Street and forty-seventh Street last night that were very concerned. I can tell you that I did make a phone call when I looked at my radar at four twelve this morning, and nothing was set up, there was no response back to me. You know, I understand we're in a drought, but who knows if that's going to run off into the basement, or if it's going to run down the, the storm sewer? So we need some communication back and forth so that we can get this accomplished. And I also would like to know where we are on the Lessons Learned Committee. I would like to know who has been chosen, if anyone, I would like to know where we are on that. I would like to know where we are on that. I can reassure you that I was on vacation last, last meeting. Um, that's the first vacation I've had since two thousand nine, but I, I will be a presence in the audience from here on out until we get the storm sewer fixed or I'm in my grave. Hopefully, we get the storm sewer fixed, so...
Okay, well, Mr. Manager, we'll have you address it and while Jonathan, maybe if you'd come up.
Yeah, if I could do the second.
Yeah, and then...
As Jonathan's coming up, Mayor, I can address the second question. So, we are currently looking for a date in September that we would have neighborhood representations and industry representation from like flood insurance providers and whatnot to have convened that meeting of the after actions and lessons learned, if you will, and from that discussion break up into committees that would last potentially much longer in the different subject areas that would be brought up. So, I would fully expect there would be continued conversations through committees dealing with communication, dealing with, again, flood insurance education, because there's definitely a lot of bad information out there about flood insurance separately, about CIP and several other topics. So, I could see us having five or six committees created at that meeting in September that would have the right expertise and the motivation allowing citizens to serve in any of those capacities.
Well, and also educate, I think, on city programs that will support people for stuff that they can do on their property as well as public property.
And one of the city programs, the loan program that is supposed to help everyone, is you have to qualify with a credit score to get that. So, there are some folks that may or may not qualify for that, but that is a credit score qualified program and that does go against your debt-to-income ratio. So, not everybody qualifies for that. That was supposed to gather all the other people that couldn't get the impact help, that couldn't get the Red Cross or any of the other help, and you're still missing people with that.
Understood, and that can be part of this conversation as well.
All right.
Jonathan.
Jenny, thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Gano, Public Works Director. As Jenny said, we had struck a, an agreement, I think it was in her front yard, to deploy a temporary stormwater pump mounted on a trailer. At the low point of the intersection, there is unique topography going on at that location that warrants some additional consideration. As we saw with the flash flooding across the entire northwest corner of the city and the south side in an earlier rainstorm, the storm sewers were quickly overwhelmed and a lot of the flow then started going over land and oftentimes going in between people's houses and then spilling into basements. At the intersection of forty-seventh and Holcomb, there is a very large and flat bowl of land where the intersection is actually the low point and the, in order for the bowl to fill up to get an overland flow route for, for, it would require an even larger amount of rain than the historically large amount of rain that we saw on the night of June thirtieth. So, we decided to treat it like we do all of our stormwater that lands behind the levee. When the, when the river is up, stormwater cannot get out through its normal gravity pipes. We set pumps and pump it over the levee. So, we'll be taking the same thing when there is the forecast of severe thunderstorms and particularly if there is a forecast of flash flooding to accompany those severe thunderstorms, we will deploy that pump out there. We have pre-cut and preformed the hose, so it just runs out and places it. The offer to the neighborhood was, well, what if one comes up where we, that wasn't in the forecast? I've made the option available for the residents to call our twenty-four-seven customer service number and we have established a procedure for that call. Center staff members, they're twenty-four-seven three sixty-five with a separate set of procedures of what to do when a call comes for this particular pump. We'll be folding it into our full, our proper flood control operations manual in the, as we rewrite it for the, over the winter for the next flood season. This will be part of it. So, at this point, it is admittedly an ad hoc solution to a situation that's been this way for a long time. That being said, I expect this to be an iterative solution that as we do something and figure out how it works or doesn't work, we'll be able to adjust our procedures as we seek to be responsive to the needs of the neighborhood while also seeking to mitigate risk without, without spurious deployments just to, when the circumstances don't warrant it. So, the answer to her question of who actually decides to deploy the pump, that is the sewer operations administrator who is responsible for the management of the flood control system as part of, as part of our stormwater system. And in reviewing the forecast and the reality on the ground, we ended up not getting very much rain last night, so it was early this morning, a decision that was validated by the, by the outcome.
Mr. Mayor, are we only going to do that for this one neighborhood? Where we have this problem not only in this one neighborhood, but like you stated, in other parts of the city? So, is this going to be a norm that we're going to do until we fix all the undersized piping that we have? I mean, I appreciate what you're doing for that, but there's other needs in our entire city and just because, you know, someone's gonna come here every single council meeting, you know, there's other residents that have needs.
But this particular location's topography is distinctly different in terms of a thirty-acre drainage area that has no way to get out, no overland flow route. What we saw in a lot of the south side rains and in the Beavertale flash flooding was the pipes filled up and then the water crashed over and in between houses in ways that did a lot of damage. There's no way out for this. It's like a bathtub. The only way out is through the drain pipes that are admittedly undersized and have been for a couple decades. So, we parked a pump there to kind of take the top off and push it over the hill to get it out, to create an overland flow route that does exist everywhere else except here.
So, it doesn't exist in some parts of the south side where you have fifty acres drain into one particular area and the pipe can't take it and then it destroyed a complete neighborhood?
Yeah, that's the, the destruction was caused by the overland flow because it filled up the pipe and then started running through the neighborhood. There's nowhere, there's no, there's no way out for the topography of this area because it all comes down, all four legs of the street run down to the bottom. So, it just fills up while we're waiting for the bathtub to drain out. So, it's, it's a unique solution for a unique situation in a way that we think is manageable.
Tony?
I just wanted to, going back to the committee, how, who's gonna be on it? How do you want to get on? I mean, is there a mechanism of sign up for, we're gonna go into the neighborhoods to, I thought we were gonna go into each of the specific neighborhoods that had issues or is there a system set up for that yet?
So, we can take additional names at any point and I've already got a list started and so you can add to that. We also are inviting those neighborhoods most impacted to send two, possibly three representatives to this conversation as well.
Okay, thanks.
So, we have a list of those neighborhoods and the folks that are gonna participate to make sure that the entire area is...
Linda?
If I can just ask Jonathan a question. If you had the pump at forty-seventh and Holcomb, where does the water go? Where are you pumping it to?
Uh, the layout has been to push it south up the hill and around the corner on Hickman to forty-eighth through a series of stormwater inlets there.
Okay, and then in my area, and I'm learning about sewers as we go because we had another meeting last week, but the storm sewers were so full that then an entire neighborhood got sewage backed up into their basements, which I'd take groundwater over sewage any day. But, you know, we had twelve, fifteen homes that ended up with several feet of sewage in their, in their basements.
And that's a different problem that has a different, that will need to have a different solution. Upstream from those places, we'll be looking to keep rainwater out and that's a, a problem called inflow or infiltration where either the pipes are leaking and letting groundwater come in or roof downspouts are directly connected to the sanitary sewer instead of a storm sewer. So, we'll be working to keep water, keep stormwater.
So, a pump wouldn't help in that?
No, no, it wouldn't. This, this is a, as far as I know, a unique situation where the lay of the land does not permit water to get out other than through the pipes. The neighborhood was just built that way and it's not how we would like it to be done.
Thank you.
Wouldn't a backflow have stopped a lot of sewage backup?
Yes, that's another element of our toolkit to offer those neighborhoods.
Anybody? All right, somebody could move to accept Jenny's comments and refer them to proper department and then with follow-up regarding the process you were talking about, about our engagement with citizens, business, neighborhood leaders and city staff and city council members to follow up on this.
See the motion?
Yep.
I'll move it, too.
Okay, let's move.
Seven yes.
Item forty-three, contingent purchase agreement with East Village Green LLC to purchase real estate at three oh six Southeast Fifth Street for two million three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, Council Communication Number eighteen dash four sixteen. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Again, I think, Mr. Manager, is this not that junkyard that's over there?
Scrapyard.
Scrapyard, sorry. Scrapyard, I'm standing corrected.
This is, this is the start of...
Something big.
Yes, of the market district and eliminating this piece of it is really good for our community and I'll move item forty-three.
This is a good one. Nice work, Joe.
Seven yes.
Yeah.
Item forty-four, accepting a proposal from Tyler Technologies, Inc. for inter-gov permitting one million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars, approving an agreement and authorizing city manager to approve future annual maintenance services, Council Communication Number eighteen dash four oh eight. Item forty-four, is anybody here like to make comment on this item? Mr. Manager, any comment?
Just a much-needed improvement from our tide mark system to this.
Yep, tide mark's been around quite a while.
This is something we talked about through our strategic planning for probably the last three years is that it's finally nice to see we're moving forward on something different. I know all the departments will like this. Much better, I would hope for...
I think, I think the other aspect is, you know, we can, we control a lot of information and as tide mark stopped, you know, providing updates and all the enhancements, I think we owe it to our citizens that we protect any data that we have and security and accessibility. A new state-of-the-art program is gonna provide a higher level of that. If, if you need a motion, Mayor, I would move it. I think this is good.
Phil, are you gonna be able to run this new software?
Only for ten years.
Seven yes.
Item forty-five, items regarding the Fluor Drive Passageway A is a concept plan and request authorization to proceed with a design, Council Communication Number eighteen dash four hundred. Is there anybody here like to speak to the Fluor Drive Passageway?
There's a B.
And B, I'm sorry. Exception to the city's request proposal, RFP, process for good cause and approving a professional services agreement with Calhoun Burns and Associates, Inc. for design and construction phase services not to exceed two hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, Council Communication Number eighteen dash four zero one. Now, with that addition, is anybody wanna speak?
Seeing no one, I, I'm happy to move this. Again, another example of the public-private partnerships, you know, the Des Moines Waterworks Foundation has really stepped up on this project and look forward to seeing what this'll, what this'll look like and it's great to see this move forward with, with those private dollars. So, I'll move forty-five A and B.
Looks like some of the work is already underway. Hopefully, the design is in place.
God's gonna say, I thought the same thing. It's like they're ready to dig up in the street already.
Seven yes.
Forty-six was not used. Item forty-seven is a proposal from Motorola Solutions, Inc. for public safety radio communication system and authorization with the city manager to negotiate an agreement not to exceed fourteen million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, Council Communication Number eighteen dash three ninety-six A. Under that is a public safety communication consultant services agreement, Phase Three, with Federal Engineering, Inc., Ronald Bosco, President, for non-competitive procurement for implementation, support of a public safety digital radio communication system and approving Amendment Number Two with Federal Engineering, Inc. for public safety communication consulting not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, Council Communication Number eighteen dash four oh nine. Let's go ahead and see if there's anyone in the audience. We had a rather robust discussion on this earlier today and I see a man with a badge on. Let's let him speak.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much. Alan Tunks, Police Department. As you know, the committee was very diligent in their task of researching a new radio system for both police, fire and public works, and I think both proposers would agree that the process was very fair and thorough. During this time, the chief of police and the command staff from the police department kept up to date and we feel that the committee did an excellent job and we support their recommendation to go with Motorola in order to deliver the best system available to your police officers and firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan? We're not gonna ask what's going on up there, but go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I got older and my elbow blew up, but I'll be fine. John T. Kipps, Chief of the Fire Department. I don't wanna try to reiterate everything that was said this morning, a lot of great detail, or to repeat what Chief Tunks said, which he said very well and the Fire Department concurs with, with what he was saying. What sticks out to me is what's important about our communication system and it's not just that it makes us functional. We can get functional. We can get functional cheap. What's important to me is this is about safety. I can't be there with our firefighters when they're in trouble and our chief officers can't either, but our dispatchers can and they can do it through a radio system that has the capabilities, the built-in technology to do that, to override what they need to override, to hear what they need to hear and be allowed, the firefighters and the police officers to reach back. That solution is with Motorola. That's how I measure this. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go into any other great detail, but I think that's important and I want you to know that I am confident in that solution from Motorola and I want you to take ownership through me of that confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, are there any other people in the audience who would like to speak on this item? I'm looking left, Bill.
I sure appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. As you said in this morning's work session, my background is being a telecommunications engineer, been doing this for over forty years, so when we had the presentation this morning, all this was second nature to me. I listened, understood all the acronyms, knew the directions. The only thing I would have requested would have been a network diagram. I think we can get one down the road. That would alleviate some of our, you know, issues we had coming up. But as we went through and understanding the technology that is being employed here, it became very obvious to me that Motorola was standing head and shoulders above. I've had the pleasure of working with both Raycom and Motorola in integrating our systems. I used to put in the old Western Electric telephone systems and we had to integrate with a lot of them time and time again, so this is not foreign to me. So, you look over the entire issues that you look at to make a sound decision. One thing that also jumped out at me is the state of Iowa system and how... One thing that also jumped out at me is, is the State of Iowa system, and how easily it can be incorporated into the Motorola system. That's something that I look for down the road. That's something that I think we need to make a priority in our decision-making process. So as I've looked through this and analyzed the technical aspects, I feel we, we were making a very sound choice in moving the Motorola method. Now, one thing that really stands out is the difference in cost. I was introduced to this project probably two years ago, and we were looking at, and I'm looking at Dave Ness in the process, we were looking at probably eighteen to twenty million dollars outlay back then. And I'm glad to see Scott put in there a budget of fifteen million to, to get the job done. So when you're looking at something that is that large of an expenditure, you're, you should be making wise decisions. For me, I took a look at that and saw that we have come down from eighteen to twenty million, down to twelve million. Now, is that more expensive than Raycom? Yes, it is. What does it also mean? We came in well under our budgeted amount. We are putting in something that we can't afford. When you start to look at some of the other aspects of it, you know, you, you look at the dependability, and, you know, we heard some good arguments placed before us, and I use the example, what if we got caught underneath a viaduct or underneath a bridge where communications was cut off, and a terrible accident would happen? I would hate to send out Chief Wengert and Chief DeKep to go talk to the parents of, of some kids that were killed and offer their condolences, but then offer up, well, we did take the cheapest bid, so we saved you some money. That's the last thing I want to have happen. You know, my entire career up here has been for public safety, and I can tell you this, if you can get the best equipment into our first responders' hands, and give them the capability that these kind of things won't happen, then we don't have to worry about situations like that. So I, for one, applaud the, the committee. If I was sitting on that committee, I think I would have followed right in step with what the recommendation was going to be. I believe we have the capability and the budget to handle it. The only thing that I would push back on the city manager would be to, just for my own edification, let's take a look at, the one thing, and I'm, I'm expanding on that as well, you, you take a look at, at the years six through ten, that Raycom didn't put numbers on. In my business, we, we get a lot of revenue generated from license fees. License fees, as most people in IT know, are started by Microsoft, and about every company out there has them. One thing to consider is that they never go down. They always go up. And how much do they go up? There's no set standard. It's not a three percent. It could be ten percent one year, and I'll give you an example. We used to have user fees in the range of fifty to seventy dollars per user. We decided to change the marketing of it to include other features, so the minimum that you come in at is two hundred and seventy to three hundred and twenty dollars per user. So in my business, I see that thing happening, however the top execs want to start changing the, the marketing of their products. Could this happen to Raycom? User fees are passed on right down the line, so I am very concerned about what year six through ten could be, whereas Motorola has answered that question for me. So, again, I, I want to put the most dependable, reliable, resilient system in the hands of our first responders, and let them do their job to the best of their ability, and I don't want to have to look at this thing for another ten to fifteen years. So in my, I will, I'd like to make a motion to, along with the city manager's pursuit of the Raycom information, I'd, I'd like to move item forty-seven and forty-seven A.
Mr. Mayor, just a question to the manager. Very well-stated, Bill, and I, and I respect everything that you said through this. Once you receive that information from Raycom, will you follow up with the council and, and let us know what, where, where, where the answers are, and, and how will that go towards the negotiation with Motorola?
It would be public information.
Okay.
Okay.
And if I remember correctly, we do get this back before us one more time?
The contract, negotiated contract.
Right. That's what I wanted to hear.
Mayor, I had a comment and a, and a couple of questions. The updated blue letter says ten million or twelve million, but I think I saw somewhere else even a larger number.
Let's write fourteen or something.
Fourteen point two six, depending on coverage level selected.
That's the next paragraph.
Yeah, the following paragraph right below it.
Okay. And that's why the, the up to. We had a number of sources of discussion this morning, Scott, in terms of the, of the negotiations, and, you know, I guess it's my hope that several of those could be accommodated, or, or, you know, there's some value of, of those things to the city, and, you know, I, I think the, as the, our city attorney said this morning, we want to stay faithful to our process, but we also learn throughout this, and need to make sure that, that the citizens and what we eventually vote on is the very best deal, and, and I hope, I hope the negotiations produce even a better deal than we, than we have today. The, the second question, and then I have a couple of comments, is the source of funds for this?
Yes, what is it?
Yes.
Have to start with the question. So the very likely way of funding this would be through a debt service that would be paid on an annual basis from our ATEs, or Automated Traffic Enforcement, revenues?
Yeah. Thank you for saying that.
Yes, that's good.
I've, I've heard that, I've heard that before, and I wanted to verify that, that that was a likely use of any revenues that we're generating from keeping the freeway and other locations safe. The, the issue I want to be sure of is, this is one, this is more of a budget and finance statement, this is one where I want to make sure that we aren't financing this longer than the agreement is. And so I would expect that we would, you know, if it is debt service, that we're selling bonds that would be paid off over the ten-year agreement, and not over twenty years, because I, you guys have all heard me say this a bunch, it's a worry to me that, you know, someday I'll leave the council and, you know, stick people with way too much debt. And so I want to make sure that, that we manage that.
And that, that is possible with the one point eight million annually through the ATEs, and, you know, that would fund fourteen million pretty easily.
Mm-hmm. I, I look at the things that we have spent money on tonight. We've spent about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on architects, you know, for various projects, and, and we've, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on equipment and supplies for our employees. We've spent two and a half million dollars on one economic development project at just one meeting right now. This is a ten-year solution for our police and fire, and when I think about it that way, and the difference in overall length of, you know, the cost over the length of the agreement and, and the project, I feel really good that this is not only affordable, but a really wise investment for our citizens, and I think if we compared the, the price from Raycom, while it is a little, while it's significantly different, you know, the cost of the agreement is a shorter term, and, and so factoring that on what we're, what we would pay per year brings the two a little bit closer together. I think that's one reason why Bill's suggestion that, you know, we move forward with, you know, Plan A, but get some additional information would be helpful to the, to the council, and I appreciate that suggestion and way to move forward. Our police and our firefighters and the citizens of Des Moines deserve grade-A, first-class, state-of-the-art solutions when it comes to their life and safety, and tonight we, we can start that by investing in a new system. So, thanks, Bill. Thanks, everybody.
If I could just add, and I said this this morning, I think our job as a city is to serve our residents, but we also have a job to serve our first responders, and to keep them safe, and to keep our residents safe. And the Motorola contract, what stood out for me was the, the first responders, the way they can talk over, and for the first time, our first responders will be able to communicate and talk to each other. That keeps them safe, and it keeps our residents safe. So that's really what won it for me, was, was that communication. I said this morning, I did a ride-along and, with a police officer, and, and that was the biggest frustration, is that our communication system really will be improved by this new system, so that's what I wanted to add.
Mayor, if I could just also add that the, for the record, that the proposal with the additional towers in Des Moines will improve the state system as well, and so there are many, many other agencies, including the state itself, that will benefit from this investment by Des Moines funded through the ATEs, so to close the loop on that as well.
Anybody else? Do we have them? Oh, Bill moved. Good. I would say as we are voting, I spoke this morning as well, I was very concerned, quite frankly, about the, the difference in the, the cost, and, you know, some of the other details, but we did get some comment from a variety of people about addressing some of those concerns, and, but the important thing for me today was listening to our public safety people, not only this morning, but this evening, talk about safety, and that they felt that with this system, given all the, the pertinent and appropriate detail around the arrangements and the partnerships with the state and others, and how this system works, that our, our, our people, not only our public safety people, but the citizens themselves, our, our public safety people are convinced that, that this is safer. And I have great respect for each and every one of those people, and, and the commitment that they make to our citizens, and quite frankly, a, a career of serving the people of the city of Des Moines, and so that was a thing that really weighed in, but I, I'm looking forward to getting those numbers and responses back, Mr. Manager, because I, I still continue to be concerned that we work as hard as we can with our chosen vendor to make sure that we get the most for our dollars.
Seven, yes?
Next item is forty-eight. It's a review of the Zoning Board of Adjustment Decision granting use variance to allow office, retail, or tire repair business at 2200 Eastern Boulevard. Subject conditions, choose one alternative below A, B, or C, Council Communication Number eighteen dash four fifteen. A is the City Council remands the decision and order to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for further study. The effective date of the board's decision will be deferred for thirty days from the date of this remand. B, the City Council takes no action to review the decision and the order, and the decision of the board will become final on August twenty-fourth of two thousand and eighteen. Or C, the City Council declines to remand the decision to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The decision of the board becomes final on this date. We'll quickly open it up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none? Oh, okay, step right up, please.
My name is Angel.
Okay. Is there anybody else out there that wants to speak on this item? If they are, we'd ask that you step up at this time. All right, go ahead, give us your name and address.
My name is Angel Graff, 2200 East, Eastern Boulevard. I just want to ask that, I have somebody rent, one, interesting to rent, and they changed their mind because they, they cannot park the car at the place. They changed their mind. If they can park their car at nighttime or something like that, just two or three cars, and they were interesting to, to rent. Right now, nobody rented.
Angel, I thought we had this worked out. Have you read the conditions that, that you agreed to when it went before Board of Adjustment? Because at first you came to us and just wanted to do a tire repair shop, and then it changed a little bit, so you went back before Board of Adjustment, and there were conditions, and I talked to you about those, and I believe it says that there can be no cars parked there. Let me get the conditions. Were you aware of those conditions? Do, do you remember that?
Yes, I remember that.
Okay. We, and, and I would be willing to move the recommendation and not remand it, but you have to follow these conditions.
Okay.
There can't be, no vehicle shall be kept on the premise for more than forty-eight consecutive hours. So you can't do that, and you can't, you can't put a lot of cars on that parking lot. Outdoor repair and servicing of vehicles is prohibited. Outdoor display of automobile accessories or tires is prohibited. You said that you wanted to rent it to somebody to do a car repair shop, but he would do everything inside. Our concern is, is that pretty soon he doesn't finish with the car, or she, whoever's doing it, they don't finish with the car, so they let it sit outside, and then pretty soon we have multiple cars sitting outside, and that's what the neighborhood does not want. The neighborhood granted you permission, knowing that these were going to be the conditions. Are you willing to abide by these conditions?
Okay, I will.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments with that, I would move forty-eight and forty-eight C. Oh, that's yours.
Seven, yes?
Item forty-nine is a proposal and authority to enter into an agreement with Voya for group and supplemental life insurance and long-term disability benefits for eligible employees, Council Communication Number eighteen dash three ninety-seven. Go ahead and open it up. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Manager, do you want to make a quick comment on this?
I know we've got our HR officials out here, really appreciate the interest that Voya expressed with this bid. Actually going to be able to save a little bit of money on, on these services, so thank you to Voya.
You're right.
I'll move item forty-nine.
Item forty-nine has been moved. Any further discussion?
Seven, yes?
All right. Want to thank everybody for attending this evening, and remember tomorrow night is National Night Out. Hope everybody will get out and...
Drive safely.
Drive safely, and let's celebrate public safety and our public safety officials in our work and efforts for cities, citizens... public safety officials in our work and efforts for cities, citizens, and everybody to work together to make a safer Des Moines. Have a great evening. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, what about the alerters?